I will be given by council member Norfelt.
Thank you, Mayor. I am so happy that so many of you are here today. Thank you for attending our our city council meeting. Will you please stand and join with us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. That was a lot louder than it normally is, and I appreciate that. We now have our minutes from February twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five, and our minutes from our strategic plan budget retreat, February twenty first and February twenty second. I'll turn those minutes to the council for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of February twenty fifth and February twenty first and twenty second.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second? All in favor, please say aye.
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 And those stand approved. Thank you. We'll now ask Dan Johnson, our Public Works Director, to come up and introduce his employees and the award they received. They were, and then we'll take a group picture with them in front of the council, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Dan Johnson, on the West Valley City Public Works Director. But I stand here today as a board member of Utah Chapter of the American Public Works Association. And the APWA exists to promote and develop the public works profession and their employees, and to help them to, just to provide opportunities for them to, to learn and develop and grow their careers through various educational programs and, and but they've also got an awards program where we recognize outstanding employees. And three of our employees in the Public Works Department were nominated and selected to receive this award. In fact, many more were actually nominated out of our city, but we can't win them all every year, and so we have to take our turn. But, but these three are, are very well deserving. And so I will read a portion of each of their nominations. And maybe we'll have them come stand by me right now. So we'll invite Justin Begay, Steve Dale, and Jeff Ray to surround the podium here while we recognize them, and then we'll present the awards to them. And I'll wait for Justin to get here. So this is Jeff Ray, this is Steve Dale, and Justin Begay. So we'll, we'll start with Justin. Justin was selected to be the two thousand and twenty four APWA Utah Chapter Outstanding Snow Removal Professional. Justin is a longtime West Valley City employee whose dedication, skill, and work ethic have consistently contributed to the safety and accessibility of our community during the harsh winter months. Justin is an invaluable member of our snow removal team. His extensive knowledge of our local roads, combined with his mastery of snow removal equipment, allows him to perform his duties with exceptional efficiency and effectiveness. Justin's proactive approach to preparing for winter storms, along with his quick response during emergencies, ensures that our streets are clear and safe as quickly as possible, minimizing disruption for residents and essential services. Justin's commitment to his role is evidence, is evident in his willingness to cheerfully work long hours, often in severe weather conditions, to keep our community accessible. He is known for his dependability, adaptability, and the pride he takes in his work. His attention to detail ensures that the job is done right, providing peace of mind to those who depend on clear and safe roads. For his unwavering dedication, expertise, and years of service, Justin Begay is very deserving of the Outstanding Snow Removal Professional Award. So we'll, maybe we'll clap at the end. How's that? Side note about Justin, a few years ago, we, Sam Johnson needed somebody, a public works snowplow driver, to talk to the news, and Justin was willing and able and did a great job and represented us very well, although he didn't enjoy it. But I was grateful for his willingness. All right, this is Steve Dale. Steve was selected to be the two thousand and twenty four APWA Utah Chapter Outstanding Land Surveying Professional of the Year. With more than thirty years of service to the city and a licensed land surveying professional, licensed professional land surveyor since nineteen ninety seven, Steve brings unmatched expertise and commitment to the profession, positively shaping the future of West Valley City through his precision in plat review and skillful handling of right-of-way acquisitions. Throughout his career, Steve has reviewed countless plats, ensuring that each meets the highest standards of accuracy and complies with all regulatory requirements. His eye for detail and deep understanding of land surveying principles has reduced errors, resolved potential boundary disputes before they arise, and maintain the integrity of the city's mapping and land records. In addition to subdivision plating, Steve is the cornerstone of the city's right-of-way acquisition efforts. He expertly handles all phases of property acquisition from initial assessments and obtaining appraisals to negotiations and compliance checks, ensuring that each acquisition is conducted transparently and fairly. Through his efforts, the city has successfully completed numerous infrastructure projects that have greatly enhanced public amenities and corridors, benefiting residents and businesses alike. In summary, Steve exemplifies the highest ideals of the surveying profession. His decades of service, technical expertise, and unwavering commitment to the public make him a great asset to West Valley City and a worthy recipient of the Outstanding Land Surveying Professional Award. And you all get to enjoy his work every time, most times that you review a consent agenda, because most of them come through Mr. Dale, and we're, we're grateful for his expertise. And then this is Jeff Ray. Jeff was selected to be the two thousand and twenty four APWA Utah Chapter Outstanding Public Engineering Professional. And as the Assistant City Engineer and Design Manager for West Valley City, Jeff has demonstrated exceptional leadership and dedication to enhancing the efficiency and quality of our project delivery. Jeff joined our engineering team in two thousand and twenty after working over twenty years in the private sector. His vast experience is invaluable to, in the growth of our younger engineers. Jeff is a passionate advocate for professional development, actively mentoring junior engineers and fostering a, a learning environment. His commitment to the, to the advancement of others in the field exemplifies a spirit of public service and professional excellence. Jeff's exceptional contributions to West Valley City's infrastructure, coupled with his unwavering dedication to public service, make him a deserving candidate for the Outstanding Public Engineering Professional Award. His innovation, technical ability, and leadership skills, and commitment to community engagement not only elevate our engineering division, but also positively impacts the residents of our city. I'm really grateful to have Jeff a part of our team. He's, he is an excellent engineer, and we're, we're reaping the benefits of his, of his skills. So, and so with that, I present to you the, the ward recipients, and maybe we ought to clap now.
Then if you'd come up and shakes the council's hand, and then we'll have a picture taken. And here's our little certificate, and thank you. Congratulations. There's another recognition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, one, two, and three.
Thank you so much for all you do for our city. I know some of these kind of backroom jobs that nobody sees you up front, kind of go unnoticed, but we really appreciate all the hard work you put in for the city and our residents. So thank you so much. All right, we'll now go to our public comment period. And we will now accept public comment. Comment period is limited to thirty minutes. Any person wishing to speak, that was cool. They're playing with my screen, sorry. Any person wishing to comment shall limit their comments to three minutes. Upon recognition by the mayor, you will approach the microphone. If you didn't have a chance to sign up, please give us your name and address, otherwise just your name. All comments shall be directed to the mayor. No person addressing the city council during the comment period shall be allowed to speak more than once. Comments should be list, should be listed, limited to city business and matters within the purview of the city council. Speakers should not expect a debate with the mayor, city council, or city staff. The mayor, council, and staff will have time to respond after the comment period has concluded. Speakers shall refrain from personal attacks against fellow citizens, staff, or members of the council. So Speaker One. Hopefully y'all remembered your numbers.
Good evening. My name is Camille Perkins. I am a West Valley resident, and I am also representing Mormons with Hope for a Better World. As an organization, we remember a past where Mormon immigrants were seen as an undesirable element and suffered restrictions. We also follow the biblical commandment to love our, our, treat the foreigner as the native-born among us, and to love them as we would ourselves. Personally, I have had friends and acquaintances share with me how unsafe they feel in the current climate against immigrants or anyone profiled as a potential immigrant. Therefore, we believe it is time to take new measures to defend against ICE. We request that West Valley City designate itself a sanctuary city and adopt policies that will further reduce cooperation with federal agents on this matter. According to the Tenth Amendment, the federal government cannot require local officers to enforce its directives and programs. We ask that West Valley City create policies further limiting the collection of data concerning migratory status, as well as the sharing of such information to the federal government. Prohibit the honoring of immigration detainers in our local facilities. Show that West Valley City stands with its residents, not overreaching federal agents. According to research published in two thousand and twenty by the National Academy of Sciences, sanctuary policies do not threaten public safety. Sanctuary policies protect immigrants who do not have violent convictions, and the policies do not affect our justice system's current avenues for addressing violent crime. The Center for American Progress also found that counties which do not honor ICE detainers trend toward lower crime, poverty, and unemployment rates. Becoming a sanctuary city will benefit West Valley City as well as its residents. I know that in the past, this council has taken pride in our city being one of the largest and most diverse cities in Utah. It's time to take the opportunity to show our commitment to living in a pluralistic society that takes care of its neighbors. We can display principled leadership in protecting the vulnerable against those that divide us. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you so much. Speaker Two.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Member. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Carmelita. I am a fifth grade student at Whittier Elementary in Granite School District, and I am here with my fellow fifth grade classmates and a member of our Whittier Student Council. Getting straight to the point, we would like to request that the road direct west of our school, six thousand west, be given a commemorative road sign that reads Whittier Way. Whittier Elementary is rich with history. We got our roots back in eighteen eighty-two, when Hunter was created as a fiftieth school district and served eight pupils. For the next five years, the community church building was used as both, both a church and a school. Then in the early eighteen nineties, a two-story building was erected as, and known as the Fiftieth District School. In nineteen oh five, we became Granite School District. In nineteen oh six, the, the two-story building was named Hunter Elementary. And in nineteen oh nine, we became Whittier Elementary. In nineteen oh nine, an additional two-story building was erected with a passageway connecting, connecting the two structures. The boundaries for this school covered a vast amount of land, restressed forty-eight hundred west to seventy-eight hundred west, and from north to south, as far as the eye could see. In nineteen twenty-one, Whittier Elementary served one hundred thirty-eight students. Then in nineteen, then in nineteen fifty-six, the building grew again to hold twenty-two rooms, a gym, a library, and a cafet, and a cafeteria. Students were bused in from current as well. Today, we see Whittier, Whittier Elementary as more than a timeline of events. We see it as a place of belongings, a place of learning, and a place of community that serves to better the lives of those who entered its store. Kindness, compassion, learning, growing together. It's all part of Whittier Way. Seeing Whittier Elementary, history, and timeline form is fascinating. I can hardly imagine the building only being large enough for eight students or only having twenty-two rooms. But more than that, I love knowing that the community was involved in Whittier Elementary. My friend Brooks will pick up where I'm leaving off. Thank you.
Okay, Speaker Three.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Brooks, and I'd like to pick out, pick up where my colleague has left off by highlighting for you some of the ways in which the community was involved. In eighteen eighty-five, the community shared its church house with the school district, establishing a solid four walls for students to learn in. This commit, this commitment to the students allowed the district to see there was a need and desire for more, um, permanent structure. That structure was built in the early eighteen nineties. The boundaries in nineteen oh nine covered much larger footprint than most schools cover today. Whittier wouldn't turn anyone away. Whittier was a second home for the students all over the valley. Wagons were sent to pick up the students who lived too far away to walk. Often, women would drive these wagons. These women were other, or other wagon drivers, were not school employees. There were community members who cared about getting kids to school. At one point, there was no running water in the building. The students would take buckets across the street to the property of Robert Jones. Mr. Jones allowed the students to fill the buckets from his own water well. This is a sure sign of community support, support and dedication to the cause. Even then, the community seemed to be aware of what we now call today Whittier Way. Field Day was held at Liberty Park again, at park. Again, the community tripped in to support the students in their celebrations by providing them, providing the transport to and from the park. In the winter of nineteen forty-seven to nineteen forty-eight, the snowstorms were bad, that the roads were blocked. Buses could not transport students home. A kind lady who lived across the street brought over some homemade soup so the students would not be hungry while waiting for the roads to be cleared. Today, we are still, we are still doing all we can to be involved and included in our community. Because again, it's the Whittier Way. Steam nights, literacy lunches, movies at the park, hot cocoa drive-bys, bingo nights, STEM activities, and the student bodies created by a Rube Goldberg machine that literally takes up the entire hallway and gym. Oh, no, and gym. That were actually, okay, are only a handful of ways that we can continue to embrace the Whittier Way, celebrating our community and involving everyone in our learning. Did you know that part of our Rube Goldberg machine was included boxed food? And this was donated by the community, whose, those items went to our pantry to support families in need. We are a team. It's the Whittier Way. In honor of Whittier Elementary's one hundred fortieth birthday, we urge you to support this legacy of kindness, compassion, and support and teamwork by gifting six thousandth west a commemorative road sign that reads Whittier Way. Thank you.
You. You can't. Okay, and these young students are gonna wait until after our meeting and then come up for a photo and want to talk to some council members if you're willing to stay after. So, thank you for coming. Speaker Four.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jim Vissok. Thank you for the nod, because I forgot my number. Only I want to talk about tonight is, once again, the fitness center is coming asking for more money. I believe it was less than six months ago, they came and asked for a large sum of money for repairs on the inside. Now they're asking for another quarter of a million dollars for the outside. Yes, I understand it's the health department. But I believe in the presentation, it was inferred that the pool brings in extra money because it's the outside pool. Several years ago, they tried to have it as a separate entity where they charged more, but then they had to bring into the membership because people just wouldn't use it. So it is part of your membership to be in the outside pool. So I don't know if it was, I misunderstood that, or, but that's the way I took it in the presentation. Once again, they have seventy-five thousand dollars in their budget. If you guys give them this money, hopefully, we take it from the budget, you know, reduce their budget that much, so we're not constantly billing them out, because this will be over a half a million dollars in less than a year, just for two repairs. And, you know, how much are we gonna keep throwing in?
Thank you. Speaker Five.
Wouldn't you know it, I'm back, Mike Markham. I missed the meeting last Friday and Saturday, or a couple of weeks ago, but I understand there was a couple of things brought up in the meeting. One of them, I won't bite, break the bad, bad news to the community. But the other one was talked about, I understand, working on the image of our city. And you know where that image starts? With y'all. No changes in this city can be made without y'all. Everybody needs to be a pinnacle out there. Everybody needs to be looked at as a person that they want to emulate. I want my yard like them. I want this. I'd, I'd like that. So it starts with you guys working towards our image, whether it be in your own yards, neighborhoods. You get out, you talk to your people. It's like I've said before, I'm probably one of the most disliked guys in my neighborhood. But you know, I have a lot of people telling me I have a great-looking neighborhood. And, and, and one of the people that told me that I was one of the most disliked guys in the neighborhood, I told him, well, the people with the nice yards like me. It's the people with the bad yards that don't like me. And then I looked at him and said, and you don't like me. People want to know how I can talk to people like that. I figure if they don't care, why should I care? We've all up here accepted a job, and if you're not willing to do the job, what can I say? It's like any job you take. If you're not gonna do it, don't do it. Resign, let somebody in that will do it and has the capabilities and the desire to take this city to another level. Because we need to work that way. Trust me, I've grown up on, on, on the west side. I graduated from Cypress High School many, many, many years ago. And I know the west side image. People have asked me years and years, why do I live out there? And my response to them is, it's because I don't want to live by people like you. So, you know, if they don't care, they don't care. And I'm going to continue to be an advocate for my neighborhood and for, for the city. I think we need to work on our image. We need to do stuff to work on our image. And that is working with, Sam needs to work with the, the news media and people like that, maybe Roxanne, I don't know what she does. But we need to do things to put some positive information out there, not, well, we had two more shootings at the apartment on, out in West Valley. Well, it used to be, it just had to be on the west side of the town, and it was West Valley. And we've got that changed. But please, everybody work together. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Speaker Six.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city officials. My name is Sean Steinman, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I serve on the Government Affairs Committee for the Home Builders Association, and I'm here to advocate a discussion, a discussion that is critical and one that ensures the future of market rate housing in West Valley City and strengthens the economic and social fabric of this community. We are requesting that Hamlet Homes be given a seat at the table to renegotiate the existing development agreement and opportunity to create a solution that benefits not just the builder, but the families that want to live, work, and thrive here. West Valley City is the crossroads, like many communities in Utah, and we are experiencing a crisis in the housing. One where working families, first-time homebuyers, and even longtime residents struggle to find quality market rate homes, housing, and quality in the market rate homes. Housing prices and interest rates continue to rise, and without adjustments to outdated agreements, we risk losing the very people who contribute to the city's success. Our teachers, first responders, service industry workers, and young professionals. Hamlet Homes is committed to responsible development, creating housing that aligns with the city's long-term goals while enhancing the tax base and fostering stability. By discussing this agreement, we have an opportunity to provide attainable housing options and market rate housing options that will strengthen the local economy. Diverse market rate housing stock attracts a stable workforce, supports local businesses, and keeps consumer spending within the city. More families living here means more revenue for schools, infrastructure, and essential services. It increasing homeownership opportunities when people own homes, they invest in their neighborhoods, they plant roots, participate in local government, and contribute to the community's success. Attainable housing is not just about affordability or market rate housing. It's about creating a pathway for long-term residential. And that's what we're looking for is market rate housing here. We are also looking to ensure smart, sustainable growth. West Valley City has an opportunity to lead in innovative housing solutions that balance density, design, and community integration. Hamlet Homes is ready to work alongside city leaders to craft a development plan that aligns with the city's vision while addressing real housing and market needs. We are not asking for a free pass for Hamlet Homes on behalf of the Home Builders Association. We are asking for fair, open discussion, one that acknowledges and involves needs of this community and the roles responsible for builders that play meeting them. By working together, we can work towards a development agreement that serves West Valley City's residents for market rate housing and for general and for generations to come. I urge the council to recognize the importance of this conversation and allow Hamlet Homes to have a voice in shaping a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker Seven.
Hi, good evening. I'm Barry Gittleman. I'm the president of Hamlet Homes and we are building in the Western Field subdivision at forty-one hundred South and sixty-eight hundred West. I've spoken or we've spoken at last five city council meetings. I've been unable to convince the council to have a discussion with me about the sixty-eight homes that we're building in West Valley City. So today I'd like to talk about what is in the best interest of the city and the citizens of West Valley. In twenty fifteen, West Valley City passed a new ordinance downzoning approximately seven hundred acres of residential property in the city. And at that time, the city was permitting about two hundred and seventy-five single-family and townhome permits in West Valley and no apartments each year. Since that time, most builders have stopped doing business in West Valley City and the average number of permits per year has declined by approximately ninety percent to about thirty per year. In twenty twenty-three, there were thirty-five single-family permits, zero townhome permits and six hundred and forty-five apartment permits approved that year. From what I've heard from citizens in West Valley and from this council, lots of apartments per year is not what the city would like to have as a long-term plan going forward. While almost everyone in America recognizes that housing affordability is a crisis, not everyone agrees over the last three years on what the primary causes are. Is it inflation? Is it labor cost? Is it greedy builders and developers? Is it excessive government regulation? Everyone has an opinion. But anyone who's taken a basic economics course understands that when a product has a low supply and high demand, costs will go up faster than if there is a higher supply of that same product. And that is the number one cause of our housing crisis in America. We have a shortage of housing in the nation and in the state of Utah, which is why Governor Cox has made increasing housing supply his number one priority for our state. While permits used to cost less than ten thousand dollars, now they're almost twenty thousand dollars. So for a decline of two hundred and seventy permits per year in West Valley, with that cost, that's about five million dollars per year. And over a ten-year period, about fifty million dollars of revenue that is lost for West Valley City. I looked at your budget for this year. It's about a hundred and thirteen million dollars. So that's very substantial. What could the city do with fifty million dollars? Could crime keeps coming up as an issue and safety? Could we hire more police officers, more firefighters? Could we build more schools or improve after-school programs? Could we do more parks or improve the parks that we have? There's a lot that could be done with fifty million dollars. And it would be in the best interest of the city to do so so that more people who can afford an eight or nine hundred thousand dollar home can move to West Valley and help make it a greater city.
Thank you. All right, was there anyone else that wished to speak that didn't have a chance to sign up? Okay, name and address, please.
My name is Adrian Erickson. I live at thirty-six seventy-two South Station Park Cove. Apologize, I didn't get to the thing in time. I would like to first off say good evening and thank you for the opportunity to stand in front of you and speak to you today. I'm going to just kind of wing it here a little bit. Congratulations, Council Member Wood. I believe you are in my district, so welcome to the arena. On that note, I would like to discuss two primary things with you today is the first I've discussed with the council here before me, the interest in young youth female sports on multiple occasions. And I would like to just reiterate again today to try and strike up some additional conversations about more support from the city on that topic. I don't feel like we have enough in the city of West Valley. There's many girls that come over from neighboring cities such as Magna, Taylorsville, West Jordan, that come to our city looking for those sports. And there's just not enough, quite frankly, or enough facilities. On the second topic today is is going to be a little bit greedy, but here I am. I would like to discuss my neighborhood where I live. We've been in an established community for seven years now with promises of the park being completed. We've had many conversations with previous and current parks directors on when that's going to take place. Unfortunately, it's an eyesore for our neighborhood, much as many of the folks have come up here and spoken today have said that we really take pride in keeping our neighborhood nice and clean, keeping the property values up. That's one piece of our neighborhood that remains unfinished and year over year remains a fire hazard during the warm weather months. So I would like to propose to the council today that I understand there's certain funding and everything, but I would like to see if the council would maybe look into at least at bare minimum leveling out, planting grass and water. I've got a riding lawnmower. Heck, I'll mow it myself. But just so that we have no longer an eyesore and no longer a fire hazard in our neighborhood. And with that, I appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Was there anyone else that wished to speak that didn't have a chance to sign up? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and I'll turn it to the council for any comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I can't pass up the opportunity to congratulate these students who weren't even gleams in anybody's eye when I retired from Whittier Elementary. I retired from the district about twenty years ago. And one of the schools that I served many years in was Whittier Elementary as an assistant principal. So I'm glad to see you're still going on and there's still a Whittier Way out there. Because it wasn't quite that active when I was there. We were in one of the growing periods. But thank you so very much for coming and letting me hear student voices repeating that pledge of allegiance. When you're in education for thirty years, you miss it when you don't hear it all the time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Not seeing anyone else. I will move to the our public hearing regarding our JAG application. It is Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-three. This is an annual grant that the police department applies for. The allowable expenses include the purchase of equipment and funding of training and programs. We will be receiving eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars from the U.S. Department of Justice and that money will be used for our gray key license renewal, our celebrate license renewal, twenty-five ballistic vests and carriers and four low light camera kits. We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this issue? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and I will turn the time over to the council for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Nordfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now have our consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we have an amendment to a development agreement. Three of our usual purchase agreements with deeds and easements and an appointment of Malih. I'm not going to get it right no matter what I do. Malihay. Well, it's a Malihay. Yeah. And Fazitshitz, Fajitz. Okay, to our healthy West Valley community or committee. So I'll turn this to the council to take all five at once or one at a time.
I move for approval of all of the items of our consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic.
Councilmember Nordfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have no need for a closed session tonight, so we just have one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Hey, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.